Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April 11th, 2023 Town Council Meeting. I would ask that we stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I need to announce that this meeting is being recorded by LCAT. And under Mass General Law, I would have to ask if anyone in the audience is recording. If so, please state your name. I don't see anyone, so we will move on. Um, public comments. Um, Jeannie?
Yes, Greg Thompson.
Great. Didn't even see you over there.
Hello.
Welcome.
Howdy. Good evening.
Uh, Greg Thompson, this is the meeting chair. Here tonight to kick off, uh, the budget discussion, budget meeting. Uh, some good news that we, as a committee, felt we would like to bring forward regarding the Chapter 70 funds. According to the governor's proposed budget at least, uh, substantially more than we had anticipated, substantially more than we had received last year. So if the governor's budget holds, we're in some fairly decent financial shape. We wanted to share that information with you based on our proposed budget that you'll be receiving tonight and then going forward, uh, in the process. If, uh, that, our proposed budget is approved, and I know it's subject to the whole finance process that you all go through, and it is a level services plus request, so certainly subject to discussion and changes. But if it's, uh, accepted as proposed, then we would look for a decrease from the East Long Meadow taxpayer, uh, as a whole for about $675,000, based on that increased Chapter 70 money. So because of that state money, uh, we had a discussion about potentially requesting additional, um, usage of those funds, but we thought based on, while you know the upcoming vote on the school in November, that if we could reduce the burden on the East Long Meadow taxpayer, or at least do a, you know, on the school, uh, budget requests. Granted, $675,000 is not a huge, uh, impact, but, you know, conceivably something. Um, so just wanted to bring that good news to you. And if, you know, as normally does, the governor's budget holds or close to, Governor Healy certainly put, uh, an emphasis on education. We feel one of the top priorities now in education, certainly on the capital side of it, is the new high school. So, uh, if we can get some momentum going on that, you know, start talking about it with you all. We're, you know, certainly pleased that many of you have gotten involved, the multiple levels coming to many of our meetings. And we're thankful for that, for, for your input and your, uh, participation in that, in that sort of thing. We also have, uh, our next one, our next forum, high school forum, will be Thursday, May 18th. Uh, we're gonna have some good information at that, at that meeting. It's open to the public. Certainly, you're all welcome to come and, and be involved in that too. That actually, I, I believe is gonna be in this building, uh, so we, we're trying to diversify where we're going. So just, uh, all encompassing. Just wanted to bring out, like I said, that good news, uh, some financial news to you all and, and wish you well in your, in your budget process. So thank you for, for a couple of minutes of your time tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Greg.
For the good news.
Yes.
Jeannie, was there anyone else? And Don, do you see anyone online?
I don't see anybody with a hand up.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, council comments. Any counselors have anything they'd like to share?
Kathy.
Oh, you can go first.
Sorry, I was looking that way.
Mine's quick. Uh, just like to give a happy birthday shout out to our very own Merrill Richards.
Happy birthday. Happy birthday.
I don't know the number, and if I did, I would, uh, I'd have to say no comment.
Thank you. You're next.
Connor.
Thank you, Ralph. Uh, mine was just a short reminder too. I mean, as we talked about at our last council meeting, we have the municipal light plant ballot question that'll be on this June's ballot for the voters. And so just a quick reminder and overview about that, even though it's called Municipal Light Plant, it's a little confusing in the state law, but it really would allow a town like East Long Meadow or any other community to operate its own broadband service. Um, and it's just really the legal entity that kind of acts like a corporation to provide the service to residents and businesses. Previously, the town council voted twice on that, but the public has to vote at the ballot. But it's also non-binding, so even though it would allow the town to move forward with it, it doesn't require that the town would follow with it. So it doesn't necessarily obligate us one direction or another. And certainly, if anyone in the public has questions, you can look at the broadband committee's meetings and work and reach out to any of us for more information. Thank you.
Great. Any other comments? Okay, moving on, town managers' report.
Thank you. Um, I've got my report from last week. Um, it's lengthier than I thought it would be in light of the budget preparation, but many of it. Tonight, you're getting your package officially. I know you've received it, uh, last week and hopefully had an opportunity to look things through. But as usual, this budget only reflects the operational expenses. The revenue is totally speculative based on the House and Senate Ways and Means Committee and then their joint work to determine whether or not there'll be any increases that the Mass Municipal Solicitation is lobbying hard for, particularly with respect to government aid. The, um, they're advocating, uh, vociferously for a 6% increase in that from last year's levels. Government's budget, roughly a 2% increase. So if that goes through, or any portion of it does, it'll be a significant benefit to the town. And we can talk more about that later. Um, on April 6th, last Thursday, the three departments moved from Town Hall to 382 North Main Street, um, Human Resources, Assessors, and the Accounting Office. Uh, it was an enormous undertaking that is still being undertaken. Um, I was there today and yesterday. There's an awful lot of unpacking to do and situating, and it's, it's going well. Um, but there are a few bumps in the road where, you know, all of us need time to adjust to change. Um, Kim's office has been wonderful. Uh, HR has been great. Assessors is having a little difficulty acclimating to the physical surroundings. IT was enormously helpful. Uh, tomorrow happens to be a payday in town, as you probably all know. And they had set up the finance office to do payroll and get all that work done so that not, there shouldn't be any blips, um, or problems with the town's payroll being met. So I have to really give a lot of credit to so many people that put an awful lot of effort into getting this done. Not to mention the DPW, which assisted with some of the moves and did a lot of the rehab work on the floor. Uh, painting, we did contract for carpeting and there's new lighting. There's, there's enormous, um, list of sort of like a punch list that people are commenting on what they need to have fixed or adjusted. And, um, so we're gonna create a, we're working, working sheet. Uh, Debbie in my office is gonna do that. So we'll determine how we can address each of these problems as time and resources allow. So, but they're over there and you're all welcome to come in and say, well, if you choose. Um, but please don't do that until next week. Just get, uh, a little more comfortable in their circumstances. Um, Bailey Mitchell submitted the town's, uh, green communities designation request to the Department of Energy, and we're waiting for a decision on that. Uh, that, we, we believe it will be favorable because, as you know, you've passed all the five prerequisites for that designation. And once we get that, the, um, town will be eligible for many, many grants, uh, energy related for, uh, conservation and other projects in town. Uh, and it was one of the major requests, highlights of the master plan, as you probably all remember. So we're very proud of that fact and, and thanks to the council for shepherding that through, uh, with, with Bailey's efforts as well. Uh, I have no progress to report on the union negotiations with the fire department, uh, other than there's a mediation scheduled for next Thursday morning. As I think I reported last month, that, um, those negotiations have been unsuccessful to date. And so it was referred to mediation, and that'll be the next step. We continue to struggle to find a veteran service officer. We met this morning, the Veteran Service Board. Um, we do have four new applications. Um, we're gonna review those apps and hopefully interview one or all four, depending on what people think about the resumes, uh, hopefully before the end of April. I've been getting an awful lot of calls in my office, uh, from widows and other veterans who are struggling to get the information that they need to get their benefits paid. And it's, it's really discouraging that we can't seem to find the solution to that position. Uh, we do have an interim, uh, ability to process some payments. The Department of Veteran Services has allowed our district administrator, which is Pam Ladue, who's the executive assistant to the board in Wales, to, uh, perform a lot of these, uh, I'm gonna call them perfunctory functions, but they're much more than that, uh, in terms of getting the benefits out the door. So we're desperate to find a solution there and, and hopefully this next upcoming meeting, which is yet to be scheduled, but it will be before the end of April, um, will provide us with a candidate that we can select. The Local Emergency Preparedness Committee met on March 22nd. That's another, uh, committee that Chief Morissette is in charge of. Uh, it's got stakeholders, uh, from a number of, of community members. Uh, we meet quarterly and the, the good news to come from that is that the police and fire departments in East Long Meadow have been chosen to train the trainers. It's a, it's a designation that both Chief Williams and Chief Morissette were quite proud of. Uh, Massachusetts is the first, uh, state in the United States to have a three-year program, uh, for active shooters. And unfortunately, as you all know, that's a necessary training these days. Um, sorry to say, but, um, so now both police and fire first responders will be given that training and our, our public safety personnel will be providing that training. So Paul in particular was very proud of that. Also, he reported that Captain Minahan has been providing CPR training for various town departments. He was here at COA, he's at the library next on his schedule, and then he's gonna train some people in the DPW. As you know, our fire department responds very quickly to all emergencies, but it would be even better if we had, uh, the comfort of knowing that there was a person on site in each of our many sites now, uh, to provide that service on an emergency basis. So we're very, very happy about that. Uh, as I reported last month, we do have a, um, a new arrangement, a new agreement on the acquisition of 70 Maple. The town has reviewed the, uh, purchase and sale, which is absent considerate, monetary consideration. Uh, and I'm waiting for a signed copy to come back from the owner of the property, but we expect that any day. Uh, Council on Aging Director Kober, uh, successfully applied for a community compact grant. Uh, it is a best practices type grant for assistance in, in continuing the, the development of her aging dementia-friendly program. I give Erin a great deal of credit for identifying that as a need and taking active steps to do a lot to educate the community, uh, about the resources that are available. The grant would be used to do sort of a baseline study of, of needs in the community and identify which next steps would be, uh, most efficient. We've also worked, uh, begun work on our hazard mitigation plan. We did receive a grant from FEMA, um, $20,000 grant with a $2,000 match from the town and what sense of services. So thank you to Councilor Voucher. I understand you're the council representative there. Um, but there will only be a series, short series of meetings, uh, because the, we're essentially updating the plan that was originally drafted in 2016. And, uh, last but not least, the Maps and Plans Preservation Project, driven by our clerk Jeannie, was, um, advanced yesterday, I believe, the representatives from, from King Document Service, or King Information Systems, is present on site to go to the next phase of that records preservation project that the Community Preservation Commission is, is, uh, funding with council's approval from last year. So that's the report for this evening.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to approval of minutes. We have the March 28th, 2023 open session minutes.
I, uh, need to approve March 28th.
So, um, 2023 open session minutes.
Second. Uh, having a motion made in seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? I actually, we have to do a roll call vote. Anna?
Yes.
Matt? Yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Emma? Yes.
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Thank you. We will move on to the March 28th, uh, 2023 open session minutes.
I move to approve the March 28th, 2023 open session minutes.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, we will do a roll call vote. We will start with Michael.
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Emma? Yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Great. Okay, and then we have the March 28th, 2023 executive session minutes.
I motion to approve March 28th, 2023 executive session minutes.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Anna?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Emma? Yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Awesome. Takes care of that. Okay, next we have communications, correspondence, and announcements. So I do have a couple. Um, we received a letter from National Grid with regards to their FY24 Annual Transmission Vegetation Maintenance Notification. Um, basically, National Grid is letting the town know that if we see trucks out along their lines, that they're doing vegetation control. It appears that it's actually at the back of the old package machinery building, um, coming out and heading, I believe that's west, um, across Shaker Road, across the rail trail, across Shaker Road, up to Prospect Street, across Prospect, over to Summers Road. Um, so they are gonna be maintaining the vegetation along those lines. So if anyone sees them, that's what they're doing. And Jeannie, I will forward this to you for the record. The next we received, uh, correspondence from Atlas. Um, they are involved, um, so I'm gonna read because it's only one paragraph. Uh, "Dear Mr. Page, the public involvement provisions 310 CMR 40, uh, 1403, uh, require that the chief municipal officer and the board of health in the community in which a disposal site is located be notified that a down gradient property status was filed with Mass DEP in March of 2023. The down gradient property status was submitted electronically to Mass DEP." Um, I went online, there's actually, uh, a web address here that you can pull up the 250 pages of the report. Um, basically, what they had to do is just report, because of the change of ownership, this is the old, uh, Ramito's Building, which is right next to the fried gas station in the center, that at one point in time, there was some contamination found. It's considered down gradient, which means it didn't come from their property, it came from elsewhere, but it was detected subsurface. So they just are bringing everything up to date and reporting it to the town. Um, I will forward it to you, and I don't think there's anything that needs to be done. I think it's just a public record, just so that everyone knows that that's occurred. Does anyone else have any communication or correspondence? No one wants to share anything? Great. Okay, public hearings. And 6:21, perfect.
Okay.
Yep. So we have a 6:15, uh, public hearing. Um, it's a liquor license application for Three Guys Catering. Um, it's a public hearing, um, to, uh, Three Guys Catering, uh, for a location at 400 Prospect Street. Um, council members present are Anna Jones, Matt Voucher, Kathy Hill, Ralph Page, Marilyn Richards, Connor Roche, and, uh, Michael Kane. Um, I'd like to ask the applicant to come forwards. And Jeannie, why they were coming forwards, if you would read the legal notice.
Notice here, I gave into the chapter, uh, Jim Walz, she has to be, like, most key. By the alcohol, the law, the license, propose relocation at 400 Prospect Street, East Long Meadow, Mass. The town council will hold a public hearing on the application on Tuesday, April 11th, 2023, at 6:15 via Zoom webinar. Or, personally, please sit in below to join the webinar for the council. Jean, our podwade, town clerk for the council.
Great. So the way this is gonna work is I'll have you present, then we'll open it up for public comment. When the public's done, we will bring it back to the board for any thoughts, comments, or additional, uh, information that we need.
My name is Rich Facher. I'm one of the members of Three Guys Catering. Mr. Robert Granger is also a, um, owner. And Mr. Joe Piccarelli could not be with us tonight, he's also the third owner. Uh, we'd like to make a brief presentation, two parts. Uh, part one would be all that we've done to get here. And secondly, what we're all about. So first, um, we've had quite a bit of preparation. Our first task was to sit down with St. Luke's and develop a contract. We would be the, uh, managing partner of the hall, that we would, um, manage the hall only for them on specific events. And we will not be opening up a restaurant, or a public event, or, um, a tavern. What it would just be is us managing the hall for St. Luke's for certain events. Um, after we got the contract settled, we then met with, uh, our town clerk and through her guidance and leadership, we filled out all the necessary forms for the state and town promptly and successfully, and that's what you have in your packet. And then thirdly, we met with the fire chief and building inspector on our application for a permanent liquor license. So that's what's probably to say with all that preparation. Now, what are we all about, Three Guys Catering? Uh, I'll begin with that. Our heart is really in East Long Meadow. Um, we're very established, and we started in 2014 at the Knights of Columbus in East Long Meadow. That was our base of operations. We then subsequently moved to the country club in Wolverhampton. And we have flourished. We've been totally successful in our nine years. And the best example I can give you is that we were very successful during the pandemic. For most businesses went out, uh, out of business. For example, we serve the, uh, town of East Long Meadow senior citizens complimentary meals during the whole pandemic. We averaged 242 meals a week that we served all our senior citizens. And we did that out of our volunteerism and out of our fundraising. So the first example I want to give you is that we're extremely established, very successful for nine years. Secondly, we're experienced. As I said, we've been in business for nine years, and we've done all types of occasions, from retirement parties, to celebrations of lives, weddings, the fundraisers, you name it, we've done it. We've also done it with large and both small amounts of people. I think our smallest party was probably around 22, and we did host a party of 663 for a fundraiser. So not only can we do every, any kind of occasion, but also any kind of a number. Example I'll give you for this, as I gave you an example of the, uh, senior citizens dinners, is we were the host for the town 125th party. We were chosen by the town to be the caterer and also the, um, our host. And that was very successful if, if some of you attended. So that shows that we're established, we're experienced, and finally, how we affect them. Um, we really pride ourselves on customer satisfaction. And we do that with, first, great food, Bob is our main cook. We also do that with a highly professional staff. We train our staff, we even have a handbook. Uh, thirdly, uh, we are very big on cleanliness and decorations. And the best example I can give you with that, um, is our pasta dinners, which we host once a month. There are a lot of people that attend, we do different occasions, different entertainment, and we use the money from those pasta dinners, because we volunteer our services, to fund East Long Meadow High School scholarships. This year, we're doing $3,000 again, Bob. $6,000 this year, which brings us over nine years, $55,000 we've donated to East Long Meadow High School students. So to kind of wrap up what we're doing, we're trying to say that our hearts in East Long Meadow. Are we getting the business of the country club of Wolverhampton? Yes. We're getting all the high school athletic banquets, we're getting celebration of lives, we're getting weddings, we're getting retirement parties. We want to bring back East Long Meadow. And that's where we fight, we feel that if we are the managing people of St. Luke's, that we're not changing anything. All we're doing is being their agent, we'll say, and managing that hall in only for private events. Nothing like a tavern or a restaurant, um, a bar, et cetera. So that's what we're here for.
Okay. Um, at this time, I would like to open it up to the audience. Um, if anyone has any questions or comments for or against. Okay, seeing no one. Um, I'll bring it back to the board at this time for questions. Kathy?
Thank you. If you had to estimate how many events do you think, in a year's time, you might be involved at St. Luke's?
Who's gonna pick that?
We're, right now, we're looking at about 45 to 50. On a high number, throughout the years, maybe 100. Definitely wouldn't be over 100. The reason we're going for a permanent liquor license is the street mind or operation, rather than have to come before you for day licenses every time. It also puts our contract in jeopardy. Again, we do a lot of funerals, and, uh, they come up in a day or two. So it, it would just be too hard for us to have to come before you every time. It's not, it's not gonna be a daily operation. It's not even gonna be a, our basis of operation. St. Luke's came to us, I guess their hall is drastically underused, they need the financial help, and, uh, we heard them out and came to an agreement.
Any other questions? Marilyn?
Okay, you can do this for 30 events, based on the one-day liquor license, which the town recognizes that as a church, um, weddings, funerals, other events would, um, want to serve alcohol. So we would give you, or through this process, um, approve a one-day liquor license. That's 30 times a year, so that's twice a month. Um, where I'm going with this, and I'm sure Rich knows where I'm going with this, it's, um, it's what you're asking to do. You're asking to take an all, all alcoholic license and use it as a banquet hall. And you're in the middle of a residential zone. And this, I know it's a church, I know churches are exempt from certain regulations, but it's a business. You need a business certificate to do what you're doing. I agree. I mean, I'm sure. And you are going to, essentially, you could operate every day if you wanted to, every evening if you wanted to. And you're in the middle of a resident, double A residential zone. And so I, I have concerns about that. I'm not against what you've done for the community and how successful you've been, but it's where you choose to do it. Um, I'm also concerned about setting a precedent. Uh, we have two one-day liquor licenses this evening for another church. Um, are, is this the best use for our alcoholic, well, beverage licenses? A restaurant comes to town and we don't have a, a license for them because we've used it in this capacity. So I'm concerned about a precedent, I'm concerned about zoning. And, um, is, is this the best use for this kind of a license? I'm curious to know if we could get an opinion from our building commissioner in terms of the zoning rules. I, you know, it's, to me, it, it sounds like if you're gonna do 100 events, you're a banquet facility. And this is a church in the middle of a residential zone. And we wouldn't let it, we, we wouldn't allow any other business to open up in the middle of a residential zone. So I, I mean, I, I, I know where you're, what you're gonna argue with me about in terms of you're different, but you're not. You're a business. You're a business.
Yeah, but I, I think, you know, I, I understand what you're switching. I just wanted to make two points. Um, first, as you say, is this the best use of a, of a liquor license? I think that we have shown our commitment to the community in many ways that we've presented. So yes, it would be. And secondly, we did send letters out to all the, um, residents as directed by our town clerk, and there's nobody here to disagree with us. So the residents, by their silence, is approving of this. And I, I, I wish we had a representative from the church that was supposed to be with us. I think you would hear from them how much they want us, as I say, just to manage the hall, not do anything more than that. And as Mr. Granger said, it's not gonna be a daily operation. And as Mr. Granger said, it's not gonna be a daily operation. We're guessing 100, but we're still guessing. And I, and our goal is really to bring back what's going to the Country Club of Wolverhampton into the town of East Long Meadow.
I think the other thing that we are, in our discussions, we've talked about is putting restrictions on the license. To cap the amount of events that can be there, so that there isn't that concern of having a daily operation.
Any other thoughts? Connor?
I would just say in general, I think it's a good idea, and I'd be happy to have people that are strong supporters and have done a lot for the community of East Long Meadow, bring business back to the town, and help out other nonprofit organizations along the way. Not even incredibly worried about it being in a residential area, because there's nothing stopping the church if they so chose to have all sorts of events today either. Overall, I think it's a good idea.
I think we're looking at individuals that are proven that they're gonna be responsible stakeholders. Managing license, I think they've shown their commitment to the community, to the town. I support bringing the business back into the town. And the fact that it is a church, as Connor stated, they kind of sort of do whatever they want. So I, I support it.
So, just for clarification, it's not the church in front of us asking.
My understanding is, isn't it on behalf of the church?
That you operate out of a church, and I think there's a distinction. If it was in a business zone, in a banquet hall, you would have already been gone and out of here by now. But I do have concerns, past planning board chairman. Zoning is very near and dear to me, and businesses in residential zones are very tricky, and they're usually not allowed. I mean, per se, they're usually not allowed. We have specific bylaws. We even had, we had to create a home-based trade because people were doing stuff illegally, and it's a way to work them out of residential zones. Do we, Jeannie, do we have any correspondence through our building department or police, fire?
Sprinklers is an issue, but it's not an issue. Right, Paul Morrisette is in the audience speaking on behalf of Dave Gardner.
I can't see that far, so. Yeah, that, that would be fine if you have him come in to speak. Well, in the meantime, Michael, I forgot you were over there. Do you have any, any input you'd like to give?
Sure. I, I guess I can speak as a resident as well, because I live in close proximity to where where the catering will be done, which obviously is the Greek church. I've heard no opposition from any of the neighbors, and I certainly have a dialogue with approximately 52 of them that live in the subdivision that I live in. I've seen, seen the work that this group has done in the past, and it's been superior. I would be in favor of trying this, and I believe that if there were problems, that we do have the policies and procedures in place to be able to rectify, which includes a licensing committee.
Gerald?
You know, I'd like to say that it's, it's not the business. It's not your reputation. It's not what you've accomplished in the community. You know, we certainly welcome good business people in town, like what you've done for the school department. I mean, it's all, it's all good. The whole issue falls down on zoning. And I would like to know, you know, did you meet with the building inspector? What did he say?
Um, I think the longer the meeting went, it started out black and white. We need sprinklers. It's not zoning. And then the more we met, the more it got more gray area, I will say. For example, the term started coming up was, you don't have to put sprinklers in. That's been validated by the chief today. And then, secondly, there were a lot of terms like, well, it can be used for temporary use. It can be used occasionally. So we had a lot of abstract words like that as we were talking in the meeting.
Which is what you're doing now. You're using it for temporary use, right?
Correct.
And occasionally.
Correct.
So I'm not taking, I'm not suggesting we take that away from you.
Right.
I'm just saying, you're asking for a all-alcoholic liquor license seven days a week, whenever, in a residential zone. And I'm a zoning person, too. And it, it, it goes against what we've tried to do in terms of, that's why we have separate zones. That way, that's why we have good standards within our zoning bylaw to protect our residential zone. You know, that license is going to you. It's not going to the church. You're the business.
I mean, to make the point that Mr. Granger made, I mean, are you open to at least giving us a pilot? I mean, I respect the number of days. Bobby said about 100? 100 at most. Give us 100 days, see how we, how we do, and then come back to you a year later and review it with us. I mean.
I mean, it's a liquor license. I suppose we should put restrictions on it.
I mean, well, restrictions on the liquor license doesn't solve the issue.
No, no, no.
If it's a banquet facility not allowed in the zone. But currently, you're able to get one-day liquor licenses for any function you want. I mean, my suggestion would be for us to look to continue this and ask our building commissioner to be here next time to get his opinion on whether or not the zoning would prohibit this particular use like this, or if he's not here, if he would give us a written opinion to the council. So it's the building commissioner, though, that does the zoning enforcement?
He says the zoning does not permit use in that residential area.
Jeannie, I'm sorry, Mary. Can you speak a little louder? I'm a background fan.
Sorry.
So the building commissioner, Dave Gardner, says the use wasn't permitted.
Was or not?
Was not.
Was not.
Which is what Marilyn said. I just wanna expand the sprinkler situation, because we're under the impression that if you had 100 or more in the building, you need to have a sprinkler system. So what Paul reflected to Rich was that if the venue where the site is holding events that are invite-only or private events, it doesn't require the sprinkler system. It's only the public nightclub, restaurant, etc. So that's why the sprinklers aren't required. So I think the only issue now is the ability, maybe, to talk about that.
Yeah, that, that's curious.
Yeah, right.
Just as far as this sprinkler system.
Very curious. That's one of the fairies that I'm surprised to.
You have 350 people, but.
Right, it's the same number.
It's just open to the public. You can only have 100.
To me, the curious part is not an issue with Three Guys or their attempt to get a license. The issue would be why is St. Luke's allowed to have a banquet hall that size? Or they probably call it a social center, maybe. I, I don't know. It doesn't matter. But they have the capacity to route it at least at 300. I'm surprised their own liability insurance or fire insurance does not require that.
Sprinklers.
A sprinkler system.
And it might have been when the building was constructed, the code changed. So I don't know. Right, right.
So, Mr. Mackey, is Bailey in the audience?
Yes.
Can we pull him in? I don't know if he wants to or not. Yeah, he may not even be ready yet. He may be having dinner.
We'll see if he appears. This is coming in.
Yes, we can hear you perfect. So I, I asked you to weigh in. We have Three Guys Catering.
Yeah, I've, I've been listening a little bit. It's kind of hard to hear, though, so I can, I can do my best, but.
So I guess one of the major questions was, it sounds like they're looking to run a catering banquet facility out of the church on Prospect Street. And I'm wondering if the zone actually allows that? Or does it have to be a church function going on at the church? I mean, I understand weddings happen at churches and funerals happen at churches, but usually the people contact the church, where this sounds like a separate entity doing it. And I, I was hoping for your thoughts on that.
Yeah, I mean, generally, I, I don't see how the use could be permitted in the zone under our current zoning bylaws. In regards to the primary principal use currently being a church, there are some limitations on zoning because of that. But I think because it's a separate entity, it would complicate things, and I would have to look into it more. But my initial thoughts were that it's, it's not a permitted use, no matter how you spin it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any councilor have a question for Bailey?
Thank you, Bailey.
No problem.
I still think there's getting an opinion from Mr. Gardner.
I, I would.
No disrespect to Bailey's opinion.
I thought he gave an opinion in the email.
He did, but I'd like a written opinion to the actual town council.
Okay.
You had a question?
Yeah. We keep, I keep hearing the word running this. For managing the hall for the church, contracts would be with the church. They get a percentage of the income.
Right.
So it's not a catering business going to use a vacant hall. It's, we're trying to bring more use to the hall. They have used the hall. They, they needed private apartments at their 50-sawn house there. The town had the 125. What is use is for, that's where the gray area, the zoning. I was a contractor for four years. I know there are interpretations that zones, and I just want to stress that we're not a business to really take over the structure. Church came to us, asked us if we could help them generate more revenue for the hall.
So it would be my thought that we ask, that we continue this and ask our zone, building commissioners, our zone enforcement officers, for a written opinion before we go to further. With that being said, obviously, if you guys have functions to go, there's still the one-day liquor licenses and all. So, I mean, I don't want to stop you from being able to use that banquet at the moment. It's just the, it's just the license. And I, I'd just like to hear from him, being the zone enforcement officer. Please.
I know that it's been, it's been tough environment for our churches. I know that. We have a shuttered church on the corner of Maple Shade and Elm Street. And we have other churches that are at risk. I get that. I was involved in a, an extensive program at the Congregational Church just last week. Ralph was there, Mary, I'm not sure Jeannie was there, but there were other people from the town that were there. And the Congregational Church is looking for different ways to market themselves, because they need money. They need money, because they don't want to close their doors. So I'm not, I'm not hard, I'm not insensitive to what you're talking about. It's just that we tell everyone, you can't do that, because it's not zoned properly. You can't, and then we turn around and we change the rules because we like you. And we do. And so I, I don't want you to get the wrong impression from my, my comments this evening. And I mean, I support the work you've done. It's just where you want to do it. And are we gonna be issuing a liquor license to the Congregational Church and to St. Paul's Church? I mean, I, that's, maybe there, there needs to be a review of our zoning bylaws to, to look at something of this nature. But it's still a business. We're still a business. You know, you, you may be in contract with the church, and I saw your very sophisticated legal agreement, and how much the church is gonna get from your revenue. And obviously, you're using their space, so there's a give and take, and I understand all that. But it's still a business, regardless of how wonderful you are. And that's, that's my struggle. But they're not gonna have the license. You're gonna have the license. It's not in their name. It's in your name. So, I mean, I'm sorry, but that's how I feel.
I would concur with what you said a few minutes ago, which is continue it until we get a written opinion. And that way, it does not, it's not a, a hard no. And it's also, if in the next 30 days, you must have some commitments for catering at, at that site, that we would allow the one-day liquor licenses, I'd go so far as to say, in good faith, we could waive the application fee while we're holding this for 30 days for review.
So, is there a consensus? Should we? We'd entertain a motion to continue the public hearing then, and ask our zoning enforcement officer for a written opinion. And it would be continued until our next meeting, May 12, guessing. Jeannie's left there.
I'm hoping that May 9?
9?
Yeah, May 9.
May 9, and 6:15.
Does that work? Someone like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion to continue this public hearing regarding the issuance of a all-alcohol license for Three Guys Catering until Tuesday, May 9, 2023.
Second.
Motion made in second. Is there any additional discussion?
I'm certainly fine with continuing it, and we can do some more research and get additional opinions. I just think I'd, I'd love to find a way to make this possible and happen. I mean, especially since, I mean, look, we're setting a meeting agenda date out for a month from now. And so even if they were throughout the rest of the year to have other events, are they gonna wait a month for an event that's gonna come up next weekend?
They could do a one-day liquor license.
But they would have to come before it's to be approved, which would mean waiting a month for our next meeting. Oh, I don't mean about the like the all license that we're talking about. I just mean if they were to do the one day ones in between, they'd be waiting a month every single time to get to our next meeting.
So maybe we need to work on the process to move that along.
Perhaps, or just make this happen at some point.
Didn't we have an agreement or an understanding that particularly in the summer, one day requests may come up in between meetings?
Right, right.
And we agreed that the clerk and the council president could sign off and make them happen.
Well, that takes care of that.
If there are ensuing commitments, then we can certainly make that happen so that they're not held up. If you have hard commitments you know about now between now and May ninth. Certainly if you're doing funeral, you know, post funeral gatherings, you only have at the last twenty-four hours notice or maybe a little bit long, but that's certainly understandable. It still goes through Jeannie, but we would make do those waivers.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor.
Six fifteen.
Motion's been made, seconded. Was further discussion? Any other? I will call a roll call vote. Anna?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much. We will see you in May.
Yes. We are, I guess, we are reaching out to the building inspectors. Is that what it is, Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Is this something we should be doing in the meantime, when we come back here in May ninth? Would like us to show or demonstrate to you something you need more from us?
I don't think so at this time, but if one of the counselors comes up with something that they'd like, we will definitely pass it through Jeannie and Erica and Patrick.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Okay, so next on the agenda is eight B, which is wines and malt beverages on premises license for Shaker Bowl Inc. So this is a public hearing. Liquor license transfer for Shaker Bowl Inc. Wines and malt beverages on premises license for Shaker Bowl Inc. at one sixty-eight Shaker Road. Council members present are Anna Jones, Matt Rutter, Kathy Hill, Ralph Page, Marilyn Richards, Connor O'Shea, and Michael Kane. I'm going to ask that you come up and I will ask the clerk to read the legal notice into the record at this time.
Notice hereby given to the chapter one thirty-eight of the general laws of Shaker Bowl Incorporated. Transfer of wines and malt beverages on premises license. Location at one sixty-eight Shaker Road, East Long Meadow. Town council will hold a public hearing on the application on Tuesday, April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three at six thirty P M. At the council on aging meeting room between North Main Street where there is a webinar for the council general committee.
Okay, again, our protocol is I will ask you to give a brief overview and I will open it up to the public for comment. I will bring it back to the board and hopefully at the end take a vote.
Awesome. Thank you.
Name and address for the record, please.
An address?
At least the name, right?
My name is Josh Oldstein. I'm an attorney from the law firm Bacon Wilson. I'm here on behalf of Shaker Bowl Inc., its manager of record, Justin Godfrey, and several of the owners are back there as well. This is, we are applying pursuant to an asset purchase agreement. My clients agreed to purchase the assets located at one sixty-eight Shaker Road in East Long Meadow. This is an application for the transfer of an annual wines and malt beverage license. The license premises, the license premises consists of one room of approximately a thousand square feet of usable floor space with comfort facilities for both men and women. Fifteen feet by one hundred fifty feet area contiguous to the rear of the bowling lanes. Storage space approximately a hundred and ten square feet. The entity is Shaker Bowl Inc. is a Massachusetts corporation, validly existing since January of this year. They will occupy the premises pursuant to a lease as the tenants and one sixty-eight Shaker LLC will be the landlord. Justin has been the manager there since two thousand and one. He's done a great job ensuring that no violations and that all alcohol is appropriately in the areas that it's designated to be served. He is TIP certified. They ensure that all their staff who serves alcoholic beverages, TIP certified. If you don't know, that is training intervention procedures. So I will let Justin introduce himself as well and kind of just tell you a little bit about what he has done over the years at Shaker Bowl.
I am Justin Godfrey, general manager, Shaker Bowl. Hard to believe. I've been there half my life. I just realized that I'm sitting here now, you know? So, but yeah, it's, bowling is something I'm very passionate about and that's probably why I've been there for half of my life. But yeah, we've done a good job. We don't have, nothing comes to mind of any crazy issues that we've had dealing TIP certified. We actually did a class with the Fazio's next door. And both of our team members got together and had a tips class this year. That would benefit both of us. So we could have it on premises instead of having our team members go.
Now, do you have any questions?
So this is from, is it Bowl New England?
Yep.
As a transfer to Shaker Bowl?
Yeah.
Because when I saw Shaker Bowl, I just assumed it was always Shaker Bowl. No, Bowl New England, okay? So at this time, I'm going to open it up to the members of the public and ask if there's anything that they would like to seek, any questions, any concerns, any public comments, good, bad? Don't see any. Don, do we have anyone online with their hands up? Okay, then I'll bring it right back to the board. Does the board have any questions?
Just a comment. I love that four of the people, Adam, Brendan, Mark, and Neil, that I see here are all from East Long Meadow. And it's just really nice to see hometown people, you know, join together for a business. And yeah, I wish you all lots of luck. This is wonderful.
Michael, I can't see you. Do you have any thoughts, any comments? Oh, that's okay. I don't think he has any comments. He's muted, so. Okay, so I will bring it back to the board. I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing?
Second.
I normally say all those in favor. Any further discussion? Okay, we will do a roll call vote to close the public hearing. Anna?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Thank you. And then do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve a transfer of a wines and malt beverages on premises license for Shaker Bowl Inc. At a location at one sixty-eight Shaker Road.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote. Michael?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Awesome. You are all set then?
Thank you so much for your time. Good evening.
Good luck.
Good luck. I think you're.
Okay, next on the agenda, under orders of the day licensing matters. We have a one day liquor license for leg foot brewing. Michael, do you have a motion for us?
I do. I'll motion to approve a one day liquor license for leg foot brewing slash rent, a tent for customer appreciation fair at sixty-four Maple Street on April twenty-ninth of twenty-three from twelve to four P M.
I'll second that motion.
Awesome. Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we will do a roll call vote. Anna?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Okay. Nine A two, a one day liquor license for St. Paul the Apostle Church. Do I have a motion?
Sure. I move to approve a one day liquor license for St. Paul the Apostle Church to thirty-five Dwight Road for a birthday celebration on May seventh, two thousand twenty-three, five to eleven P M. Second.
Motion made in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we will do a roll call vote. Michael?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Okay. Nine A three, a one day liquor license again for St. Paul the Apostle Church.
I move to approve a one day liquor license for St. Paul the Apostle Church to thirty-five Dwight Road for a wedding reception on May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three from five to eleven P M.
A second? Motion made in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we will do a roll call vote. Anna?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Thank you. Nine A four, approve a change of officers, directors, LLC managers for ninety-nine West.
Well, are there any discussions for that?
So I'd like to start with the motion and then under discussion, we will talk about it.
Perfect. I move to approve a change of officers, directors, LLC managers for ninety-nine West LLC at three ninety North Main Street. Second.
Okay, motion made in seconded. Further discussion? Are they here? Yes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Good evening. My name is Tyler Hensler. I'm an attorney here at Upton, Cunnell, and Devlin in Boston, representing the ninety-nine. I want to thank you real quick for getting us on tonight's agenda on such short notice. I appreciate it. And I apologize that I can't be there in person, but thank you for that. I, you know, raised my hand. I hope I didn't miss anything. But if it's helpful, I can walk you through what's changing and if not, you know, if you don't need to hear it, that's fine too.
Actually, if you can give us a quick overview, I saw some of the paperwork and it looks like this is happening over multiple locations. Is that accurate?
Absolutely. So we put together about sixty applications to go to different municipalities. This is something the A B C C makes us do when an officer change happens. Basically, there are two entities that own pretty much all of the ninety-nines in Massachusetts. One is ninety-nine West and the other is ninety-nine Restaurants of Boston. They kind of divide the state in half, eastern half, western half. This is ninety-nine West. And what's happening is that Wendy Harkness, Charles Noils, and Kurt Schnabelt have left the company, are being removed as LLC managers. And Clint Lotenschläger, Marjorie Nethmera, Philip Purcell, Mark Spurgeon, and Kara Jacobs are being added as new LLC managers. From the perspective of the people of East Long Meadow, nothing's changing. The store will remain exactly the same. Manager is not changing. The LLC manager is changing. So this is merely something that the A B C C makes us do. And this is actually the first of the sixty that we will have to do. So it's good to hit the ground running like this. Thank you.
Thank you for the explanation. Does anyone have any questions on us? Okay, we've already had a motion made in seconded. I would call a vote then. Anna?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
And Michael?
Yes.
So you are all set. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, financial matters. Mary, you're up. A presentation of the operating budget for FY twenty-four per Article six, section one of the town charter.
It feels like almost a futile endeavor to submit it and present it in any fashion because it's strictly operational. There is no information on the revenue side that's reliable. Worst case scenario, there would be no change in what the governor's budget was, but historically that's never happened in my lifetime. And until we know what the revenue side is in terms of all the local aid numbers, it's premature really to worry about a tax rate or the implications to taxpayers. So the budget was prepared beginning in January. The last fifty or so pages is all the detail of each respective department, broken down by salary and non-salary items. The department heads were given a directive of level, a level services budget. And there is some, obviously, the major increases are related to the COLAs that are the union negotiated increases for our union personnel. And as well as some department heads received similar raises, I've advised them that they could hook those into their budgets. The council last year, I guess I probably don't need to remember, to remind you of this, but you approved the succession plans for several departments. Police is expensive because we now have our first police lieutenant as well as a deferred reappointment of a sixth sergeant. That was the result of negotiations last year. So those two positions are adding a considerable amount to their budget. Fire department has its first deputy chief. The town manager's office has its first deputy. So those are three large salaries that are added to the budget this year. But all well planned for and certainly contemplated for years before they were actually implemented. The other major budget busters, as I call them, are our health insurance, our third party costs. They go up every year. They're out of our control. We think constantly about whether or not this would be the fiscal year when we can entertain a consultant for insurance purposes to see if there's any benefit to switching over to the G I C versus Scantic Valley. We just don't have the capacity in-house to make those evaluations. So we have to go outside for that and it's an expensive proposition. But it's something that hopefully within the next year or so, if not two, we'd be able to do that. So those third party costs are significant. Health insurance goes up, liability insurance. Now this year we'll have a slight increase in liability insurance because of the premises at three eighty-two and seventy Maple for that matter, although I don't have pricing on that yet. But by and large, this is a closed fist budget, I'll call it. There is no fat in it. We have one new position that I articulated in the budget message. And that's a shared nurse position for the council on aging and the health department. Council on aging is in desperate need of a nurse position. We all know from probably our own personal experience that you can't, you can't get an appointment with your with your primary care provider for under ninety days in most cases. So to have a nurse on site to take blood pressure, to do some of the basic nursing skills that were always provided here in the past is a need that's vital. And on the health side, they're continuing to be COVID aware and other viruses that are floating around the community. Our health department is very proactive in terms of defending the population, so to speak, from those viruses. So they too need a nurse and it's been a very difficult position to fill. Health had one over the last couple of years during COVID that was like the ten or a twelve hour position. But most people want more than that if they're going to make the investment. So. most people want more than that if they're going to make the investment. Uh, so even splitting it fifty-fifty between the two departments is a bit of a gamble, but, uh, it's better than nothing. But that's the only new position. We have so much going on in town, and, and so much effort is made on a daily basis by the department heads to, to move the needle forward on so many projects. And they're doing it really on a shoestring. Um, so I, I really have to thank them, which I probably do, uh, as often as I open my mouth, but their effort is remarkable. Their sacrifices are, are really impressive to me. They do a lot with a very little, and nobody hardly ever asks for anything more. So, we got the directive to have a level services budget. No qualms, just done. What else can we do to move the town forward? So, I'm hopeful that with some of the, um, participation that we've had with the Mass Municipal Association and our, uh, contacts with our representatives and the Senator Olivera, that we'll have some persuasive influence on the House Ways and Means, and then ultimately the Senate Ways and Means, and and have a budget that, that, um, will keep the tax rate at a reasonable level. We've underestimated, in my view, we've underestimated, um, uh, our new growth for this year, but Kim was using, initially, I think, used the number from last year, and then the assessor's office came in and said, well, we're going to knock fifty thousand off of that based on some of their data. So we're only estimating four hundred and fifty thousand in new growth this year versus five hundred that was in the last couple of years. And also, the property valuations, once they're established, will be a percentage that will allow for additional revenue based on the two and a half increase. So, all of the, as I said to start, all of the revenue side is speculative at this point. And as it becomes available, we'll supplement and certainly inform you as we go along. Uh, the Finance Oversight Committee is, uh, chomping at the bit to get started reviewing this. Um, Thursday at one-thirty is their first meeting. So, uh, that's where Tim and I will be, and, uh, happy to answer any questions that they have or if you have any from, you have the opportunity to look at any of this over the weekend.
Every single day.
I hope you didn't.
Thank you. Um, any questions?
Not a question, just a comment. Um, I mean, thank you all. I mean, especially Kim for coming into this process brand new. I mean, that was, uh, very thorough packets. Thank you all.
Actually, she's not new. She has a great deal of experience. And it's been to our benefit remarkably. She's, she's quite, quite proficient and has, you might have noticed, some of the formatting of some of these Munis pages is a bit different, and it was an attempt to streamline some of the uh, hands-on aspects of this budget. In former years, the town, uh, department heads would prepare hard copy budgets, send them to accounting. Accounting would upload them. This year, they uploaded them directly into Munis. And then Column Two is my review. Level Three, I think it's called, is the Town Council Review, which is the third, uh, yet to be filled in column after your review of this. So, I'm very pleased with the presentation that Kim gave to me and the effort that she and her staff have put into this, as well as all the other department heads that contributed.
So, initial review, I like the fact that you laid out, um, like in the police where there, where there was a bump, you gave a reasoning for it, so that you can go back and forth. If you see a high percentage, it's easily accessible and there's a rationale for it, which saves a lot of questions going forward, which is great, and I do appreciate that. As far as the nurse goes, if everyone remembers, two years ago, I want to say, when we looked at Genie, the one shortfall we had was a nurse, and I think the timing is right to do that. That's my opinion, but, uh, but again, look through the whole, uh, budget. I, I appreciate it. It gave me something to read over the weekend. Any other questions? Okay, then we're going to move on quickly here. Thank you, Mary. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Kim.
And Kim, thank you for putting that together. Um, duh, 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 duh. We have financial matters. Approve the appropriation of thirty-nine thousand sixty-four dollars from the Stormwater Enterprise Fund to offset a shortfall. Is there a motion for that?
I move to approve the appropriation of thirty-nine thousand sixty-four dollars from the Stormwater Enterprise Fund to offset the shortfall under the Mass D O T grant for engineering services.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? I'd just like clarification and maybe from Kim or Genie. So it's coming from the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. That's the retained earnings? Do we need to specifically say from the retained earnings? So, would someone like to amend their motion to include the words retained earnings?
I move to amend my motion to specify that the thirty-nine thousand sixty-four dollars would come from the retained earnings portion of the Stormwater Enterprise Fund.
Second.
So that was a motion to amend, so we're going to vote on that first. So we're going to do a roll call on amendment. Anna?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
And Michael?
Yes.
Now we're going to vote on the motion as amended. Roll call vote, unless there's further discussion. Anna?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
I'm a yes.
Connor?
Yes.
And Michael?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure the money comes out of the right location. Next, we have, um, a transfer of the pension fund balance to the O P E B fund. So is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve a transfer of the pension fund balance to the O P E B fund.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion?
How did you find this?
That's what I was going to ask.
I don't know if you noticed at the bottom of the account summary sheet, I put all the reserves. Also, the process of rating was a composite of this house. So as I was describing all the reserves, I, I was right at pension reserve. And this, and nobody's gone into it, so I went back through all the years. At one point, we tried to put money into it, and then we go and we take the way out and we do it all again, so.
So what, so what's the total? I'm try, I was trying.
It's about a hundred and eighty of us.
That's wonderful. It's, O P E B account will welcome that.
Great job.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. We'll start with Michael.
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
So that means our O P E B just jumped up. Is there enough in it yet? Full business. First reading for a proposed zoning bylaw amendment related to self-storage facility. So, um, if you remember, we were petitioned, um, for a bylaw change for self-storage facilities. We forwarded that to the Planning Board. The Planning Board has now sent the self-storage facilities back so that we can do a first reading. Connor, would you like to read it into the record for us?
Sure.
Thank you.
First part was a memo, uh, to Genie as the clerk of the council from Bailey Mitchell, the Director of Planning and Community Development, regarding the recommendation of bylaw amendment for self-storage facilities. At the Planning Board's April fourth, twenty twenty-three meeting, the board reviewed proposed amendments to the town of East Long Meadow zoning bylaws, Section four fifty dash eleven point two and Table three dash one, Schedule of Use Regulations Attached. The board voted unanimously to recommend the amendments with certain edits to the Town Council for their review and approval. The edits proposed by the board are included in the attached language for the Town Council's review. The board proposed having two definitions for indoor self-storage, one that applies only to the industrial and industrial garden park districts, and another that applies only to the mixed-use village district. This is because the use definition originally crafted as part of the mixed-use village district bylaw is substantively different than the use definition proposed herein. The board's recommendation is one way to provide a solution to this issue. However, I would recommend a different solution. I recommend, as Director of Planning and Community Development, that the use be defined once in Section four fifty dash eleven point two for all zoning districts for clarity and ease of administration. Additionally, the use should not be permitted within the mixed-use village district as the indoor self-storage use with either definition is not appropriate within a mixed-use setting. The board's discussion on this vote is duly noted in the minutes of their April fourth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Respectfully submitted, Bailey Mitchell, Director of Planning and Community Development. So we have, is that, is that Article nine?
Actually, that's a typo. It should be eleven.
Oh, okay. Article eleven. Definitions, uh, Section four fifty dash eleven point two, terms defined. Indoor self-storage, parentheses added, mixed-use village district. A facility that provides indoor units leased to individuals and business owners for the storage of household goods, excess supplies, and archive records as examples. Such facilities may be climate-controlled, individually secured, and may have multiple stories with elevator access. All storage units to be accessed from within the building, and no storage unit shall be used as a residence. An added indoor self-storage, and then in parentheses, industrial district and industrial garden park district. A facility that provides indoor units leased to individuals and business owners for the purpose of storing and removing personal property. Such facilities may be climate-controlled, individually secured, and may have multiple stories with elevator access. The majority of the storage units must be accessed from within the building. Any storage units to be accessed from the exterior of the building shall be ground floor units and shall be appropriately screened to minimize their visibility from public ways. No storage unit shall be used as residence. Self-storage facility. Any real property designed or used for the purpose of renting or leasing individual storage space to tenants who are to have access to that space for the purpose of storing and removing personal property. A self-service storage facility is not a warehouse. All storage units must be individually secured, and no unit shall be used as a residence. All buildings within a self ster, self-service storage facility shall be limited to one story. A lot of S's. And then, in our table of uses, we have under E-business uses, number three, indoor self-storage. All columns are N with the exception of industrial, which is S P, industrial garden park, which is S P, and mixed-use village district is Y. Then number twenty, self-service storage facility. And standards and conditions says see Article eight, and then all are no except for industrial, which is S P, and industrial garden park, which is S P, with S P meaning special.
Great. Thank you. Um, Don, is Bailey still with us?
I am still here. Never left.
Never left the panelists. Sorry, I've been on the other end.
Okay, Bailey, I don't know if you heard that. We are dealing with, uh, self-storage facilities right now. Uh, we've just completed the first reading of it, and I know you, um, had some suggestions, as far as, uh, definition and stuff like that. I just wasn't sure if you wanted to add a little bit. Obviously, we still have a second reading in another month in a public hearing, but I figured I'd open the floor to you.
Um, I appreciate it. I, I think my memo kind of outlined everything, really. I don't really see, um, how it fits in a mixed-use setting. Um, so I would just suggest for clarity's sake that we only have one definition. Uh, like I said, though, it, it works as is. Um, if you wanted to keep it as a permitted use within a mixed-use village district, then I would, um, I would go with the Planning Board's recommendation of having two separate definitions in that case.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? So it's typical when anything with, uh, to do with zoning comes in that we refer this to the financial matters committee for a quick review. So I would entertain a motion for that.
Okay, I'll motion to refer proposed new zoning bylaw amendment related to self-storage facilities to our Planning Matters Subcommittee for Recommendation.
Second.
Okay, have a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. I'll start with Michael.
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Great.
Can I just ask?
Absolutely.
Bailey, Marilyn here. Um, in the definitions, the self-service storage facility, that's a brand-new definition, right?
Uh, self-storage facility, or self-service storage facility, yes, that is it.
Okay.
The definition.
Uh, we weren't sure because it wasn't in red.
Yeah, so the red line is just the changes from the original proposal that the Planning Board recommended.
Gotcha. Okay. I just wanted to make sure we were on the right track. Thank you.
Yes, no problem.
Okay, next on the agenda, it's listed as a first reading for a proposed site plan review by law amendment. But before we do the reading, which is forty-four pages, or if we do a reading, um, so this has been referred back to us by, um, the Planning Board, and the Planning Board has voted, um, not to recommend this. Um, I have concerns, um, and I did initially when it was, uh, first proposed and submitted, that under the charter, it says, um, all bylaws are to, pertain to one item only. And I look at this as multiple items. I look at this as it should have been broken down. The parking regulation, Section five point eight, should be separate. If we're going to remove design review, that should be separate. Uh, a waiver of site plan, um, to remove that so that it's only under a, a business certificate should be separate. So when the charter was crafted, we did this specifically so that, um, it was less confusing. I know it's a lot more work. Trust me, I know that. We went through E-code, and we had to actually change the charter temporarily to do more than one item at once. But with that being said, I don't believe what's coming in front of us can be lumped together as only one item. That's my opinion. I don't know if anyone else has any thoughts on it, um, before we go any further.
If I may?
Marilyn?
I attended the public hearing for this, this bylaw. Actually, it was two meetings because it was continued to the next month, and it's, it's complicated because it took me three readings to figure out where, where the original information was, where it was moved to, and what was being removed, what was being added. And it, it is complicated. And I, but I felt comfortable at the time that everything needed to be where it was supposed to be. However, I sat in and listened to, I testified for certain things, and the, um, board members had some concerns, and my feeling is that there needs to be some work, some additional work, because as a, as the Chair of the Planning Matters Subcommittee, I don't want to go through these forty-four pages and end up sending, sending it back and saying, you need to work on this. I believe that's what needs to happen now. Um, there are some very good things that are being proposed. However, um, the, the Planning Board has some concerns about it, and I feel that somehow there needs to be some, I don't know, meeting of the minds. Maybe it can't be exactly what, what, um, the Planning Board wants or what, what the director wants, but just to have a line drawn in the sand, we're not going to support this. Um, that's a concern to me. I think it just needs more work. I really do.
So the reason I brought it up is, under the zoning bylaw, it comes to the council with a negative recommendation from the Planning Board, and we vote it down. It cannot come back for two years. I don't want to wait two years. I think we, I think there's adjustments that need to be made, and maybe piecemeal it, maybe take, as I said, like the waiver of site plan and work on that and get that passed. Then go to the design review and adjust the. Then go to the design review and adjust the wording on that, get that passed. I think by clumping everything together, although I'm not saying that I disagree with everything, I'm simply saying that it becomes extremely confusing. And I think that may be one of the reasons why the planning board just made it easier and said, no, we're not interested and moved on. I just, I don't feel right about voting this down. I could not vote for it in the condition or the way it was presented. I personally couldn't. And so I just don't think it should wait two years to come back to us. So that was my thought process.
If I if I may, another piece was in the beginning of the public hearing, Bailey, you pulled out from the the discussion certain items. You said that the the parking plan, the parking section was going to be dealt with separately with a, actually with a with a consultant because you had neither the time nor the staff to look into that, yet that information is still part of the document. Well, that's what we have.
No, so what I stated was a the off-street parking bylaw as a whole would be reviewed in a in a separate way, not as it relates to a parking plan.
But that's also another section. It's another.
Parking regulations, not parking plans.
Okay, okay. I I'm I'm not sure what that means, but anyway, I understood, maybe I understood it differently. My apologies for that, but I just I just felt that it was, it's what we have is not what the charter asked for, something that's ready to be printed. It needs, you know, it needs to be in in final format and we don't have that.
Connor, any thoughts?
I would agree that lumped together, it is a lot to work through and perhaps a bit confusing for all, but I would also agree that I think overall, a lot of these things do need to come to fruition, to simplify and streamline things because it's a lot of here's coming, especially with the change in form of government, too. I mean, I think some of this stuff is just vestiges of how things used to be done a decade ago and need to be brought up to how things are organized today.
Kathy, if you can help. Matt?
I don't disagree with any of the of you who just spoke. My initial thought when I read it was, I think I'm confused. I read it again a second time and became a little more confident in what I was reading, but having heard what Ralph and Marilyn have stated tonight, and they have significant years of experience involved with planning and bylaw, planning zoning, and then the creation of bylaws, I would defer to their best judgment that it should go back to to the planner for refinement.
So does this, so does it go back to the planner and then has to go through the planning board again? And then, just just from my understanding, not even I disagree, and then it would come back to us? Is that correct? Okay.
But all separate pieces.
That's what I'd like to see. And I mean, if Bailey would be okay with setting up a meeting with me within the next couple of weeks, I would love to sit down and see if you're amicable to separating this out into what I would consider three or four pieces, bring each one forwards. I know you want it all done at once. I just don't think, I don't think the charter really allows for that. I mean.
I guess my, I'm a little confused because it is separated out in terms of articles. And the notice, I guess, is really the biggest hang-up I have on that. And I I hate to send out separate notices for every single change that we're making if we're having the public hearings at the same time. Because it cost me four hundred and fifty dollars to do this one notice. And if we're going through the process again, which it sounds like we're going to, for the same thing, we're going to do four hundred and fifty dollars times three or four, however many times when we want to split it up. I I don't, I mean, currently I have the budget to do that, but I don't see how that's sustainable for me to do that with the things that I want to do in the coming year and I think are extremely necessary for us to make the changes in our bylaws. So while I don't necessarily see it as too much more work because I could easily separate them out, but I I just, I I need to, I guess, figure out how we're going to do that with the public notices and how that's going to affect us monetarily as well.
So I do understand the point monetarily. America, I believe me, you and Mary had talked about this and we did understand when when the charter was written specifically that, yes, we knew it was going to cost us more money to do it this way. We understood that. And nine-member charter commission chose to write it in like this. And then just recently, two years ago, the charter review committee decided to keep the language the same and do it. It was done that way on purpose and I'm going to use the word transparency. If it's hard for counselors to understand the changes, I can tell you what, it's impossible for the public to understand it. And I think if we break it down and and attack it in pieces, I think it's the best way to do it. That's my opinion. And again, I would be more than willing to sit down. Most of what you want is here. I mean, I just, I don't think it's in the format to be adopted. I mean, I'm looking at, you know, just on the table three, one, on, well, it's first page that I have, the second page, you've got a change to recreational facility, commercial and private. You went from no to special permit. Well, that's not part of a waiver of site plan or a site plan review. I know those are things that we want to get done, but that's not part of it. And, you know, then I look at other areas in here and I just don't see where the parking relates really to changing how we do a waiver of site plan or completely removing the waiver of site plan. Those are my concerns. And again, I think ultimately we need to to move out of, geez, I don't know even know if I want to say the small town feel, but there was a lot of recommendations done by Pioneer Valley Planning that you've pointed out and they're accurate and we do need to do it. I just think there's a little bit different way to do it. Connor?
I suppose breaking it up, although it would add a little bit of expense, it would also afford the opportunity because I'm sure there's going to be disagreements about each of those pieces that some could pass while others may not, whereas if it's one package, it's kind of an all-or-nothing.
So the wishes of the board would be not to move forwards at this time with this instead of doing a reading and a public hearing on what we have in front of us? You think that's where I'm hearing? I mean, I don't, I really don't want to go forwards and vote it down.
So.
Eat it down.
So. Can I say something?
Absolutely, Bailey.
So I think that's fine. Like I said, I'm open to, you know, working with you and and, you know, making it something that is easy for you and the public to understand. And I I apologize that it wasn't, I guess, in a decent enough form. It is complicated. I mean, no matter how we break it down, it's going to be complicated. And I just want to get that out there now because I'm I'm going to need some input at some point. And I'm a little frustrated with this whole process because I haven't seen any input thus far from, frankly, the planning board. And I I I want to make something that the community can actually get behind and the planning board and the town council can get behind. So I'm fine with this. I I just want some assurance that at some point I will get some detailed input that I can act on rather than just sending it back to me to kind of shoot in the dark because that's what it feels like right now. And that's why I was hesitant to not bring it up at all tonight. That way we could have this discussion and just make sure we're all on the same page that I really need some guidance at some point on the specific things that you may or may not agree with in the language that was presented.
Go ahead now.
Bailey, how much involvement did the planning board have in actually creating this document?
What do you mean in creating?
Well, I mean, we have, we have a bylaw that has that has a number of changes, you know, red redlined, green additions, you know, text has been moved from one part to the other. Was the planning board involved in any of this at all? Creating the document that that we then discussed in a in a public hearing? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
In the creation, I I guess, I I've had meetings with members of the planning board, discussions, and we've, they've they've seen this since December. So in terms of the actual creation, I didn't sit down with every single member. We didn't craft it in a meeting. Frankly, the planning board doesn't have the time with their caseload and that's one of the reasons why I wanted to have waivers, you know, removed from there or, you know, lessened in some way. That way we could have some time to sit down and craft bylaws in the future. So I don't know exactly what you mean by.
Well, I guess, I guess, Bailey, if 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 I'm involved in crafting or working on something with you, you're going to hear what my issues are as we're working on it. It's not fully prepared and then everyone then sits at, you know, sits down, looks at it and then proceeds to take it apart. You know, I got the impression that when I was in the public hearing, I got the impression that, you know, there are concerns that were raised and you had some, you know, issues that were important to you and there was a disconnect and we have to get past that somehow. That's what I'm, that's what I'm concerned about. And if if I were involved in in crafting something with someone else, you hear what I have to say right when we're doing it, not, you know, it it becomes a team effort. I guess that's what I'm focused on.
I can definitely vouch for you.
Yeah.
I guess nowhere to put you on planning matters.
Me?
I mean, I understand what you're saying, I think, to some degree, but frankly, I don't think, again, I don't think there's enough time in a day for the planning board as a group to sit down and do the changes that I presented. I don't, I don't know. Maybe I'm wrong.
Well, so I think we've pretty much come to a conclusion. We're not going to read it in tonight, but I would like to, I will follow up with you tomorrow with an email to set up the time between me and you so that we can walk through this and and get the process done and not drag it out. I will make myself available whenever you are and we'll sit down and make sure it works.
Thank you.
Okay, full business, update town manager search. I asked for this to be put on. We did, I asked Jeannie to put this into MMA, which has gone in. I remember writing on the thirtieth and thirty days she put it in for, which would be April twenty eighth. There, there has been some response already to the ad. I don't know how much, but I know some. But I did want to let you guys know that, yes, this has been done. I believe it did go up on our website or is going up on the town's website. So, so everything that was asked for, yes, we were moving forwards. Once the end of the month comes, we will compile all the resumes and then we will set up a time and take a look through them and go from there with it. But I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss anything. Was there any any thoughts, anything additional that someone wants done? Michael? You've been quiet.
Smooth sailing, so.
Okay. Thank you. Action items in this meeting is do your budgets. Finance oversight committee, as was stated, starts on Thursday at one thirty. Does anyone have anything? Any action items? Any motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
I second.
Okay, it's a roll call vote. Michael?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Thank you all.